Hello, hello. This is D2 Kasui with Urban Financial Services Coalition. I'd like to welcome you to our special session. This is actually a part two session. The ABCs of Professional Designations: Mastering. That's right. The key word is mastering the test. Featuring Ernest L. Smith. And we're so happy to have Ernie with us to discuss taking our careers and our relationships to the next level by being more qualified at what we do. And having something that says, you know, people can say that they're qualified, but it's nice when you have something behind your name that lets people know that you are qualified. And that's what certifications enable individuals to do. So our program for today is pretty simple. We're going to do a welcome, welcome. You know, so if you're new, go ahead, throw in the chat, you know, throw your name. Let us know where you're calling in from. And if you have your LinkedIn profile link, go ahead, put your LinkedIn profile link into the chat so other people can know how to connect with you. And I'll also be putting in the chat myself a little while later. The Urban Financial Services Coalition has a LinkedIn business page, and we have a LinkedIn group. That way you can stay connected to Urban Financial Services Coalition and other individuals can connect with you. So we'll have a little networking. We'll hear from the Urban Financial Services Coalition President, National President, a little bit later. Then we'll have a presentation, and then we'll have some Q and A, and then we have some miscellaneous announcements to share with all of you. And so we're going to do a really quick networking session. It's going to be, I'm going to give you 3.5 minutes to share with your colleague, just share your name and the company you're with. And then share one, if you're preparing for a test, you know, share the name of the test. And if you have passed the test in the past, you know, share one best practice that you utilized to pass the test in the past. So everybody should have that. So in just a second, you will get a link. Just click on the link, and that will put you into the room. Hi, Annette. How are you? Hello, welcome. Is it Tendi?
It's Tendai.
Tendai, how are you?
How are you? Sorry to be late. I was moving my car and getting a $115 ticket. My bad. I'm a little tight right now.
Well, send me your cash app handle. I'll send you $2.
You know what? I appreciate the gesture. I'm gonna pay them. You know how they are. They want to wrangle you.
Yes.
Insperable construction. I live here. This is my block. Like, why are you, like, really? And half the people that park there are the stupids that work across the street on the construction site. But you're going to charge me $150 for the privilege. Got you.
There you go.
All right. Well, let me stay focused. Let me stay focused. I'm supposed to be saying who I am, what company I work for, right? So my name is Tendai. I'm in transition.
Okay.
Um, I've been playing around with the project management exam. Like, it's stressful.
Gotcha, gotcha.
It's the kind of thing where, you know, you do the work, so you know it intuitively, but to actually study this stuff and sit down for this exam is like daunting.
Yes.
And I'm trying to understand if the ROI is going to be right, is going to be like worth it, right? So just to give you a little background, my undergrad is in communications. My master's is in business. Obviously, when you're doing a business degree, you have to take a certain portion of courses that are project management. If I had have focused and understood that I could have took the PMP then, way before it changed two more times, I probably would have did it then.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But I didn't look at it like, oh, that's a tool that I need in my toolbox, per se. Because if you have the concepts in your head and you can engage it and execute, then what's the difference? Why do I need to pay all this money to keep up this cert?
Well, that's one of the things that our speaker, Ernie, is going to talk about in just a moment. So I'm going to get you to hold on to those thoughts. And we're about to get into it in just a moment.
Okay. Well, I'm thankful that y'all, you know, having us sharing this knowledge, wisdom, and understanding.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, thank you so much, everyone. Hopefully, you got a chance to meet your colleagues in the breakout room. One of the things that we always try to do is have individuals to meet other people. The big thing with Urban Financial Services Coalition is that we're your professional family, and we're always there to help each other and support each other in whatever we do. So we encourage you, if you haven't done it already, to go ahead and put your name in the chat. Let us know where you're dialing in from or participating from. And if you have your LinkedIn profile, you can put your LinkedIn profile in the chat so people can click on that, and we can connect with you on LinkedIn. So with that, I'm going to turn over the program to our speaker. And our speaker is going to actually introduce himself. But let me just say this one thing about our speaker. He is an amazing, amazing professional. When I was just a wee person in the financial services industry, I remember coming to my first Urban Financial Services Coalition national meeting, and Ernie Smith was up on the stage presenting. And I said to myself, I said, oh, my goodness, I want to be just like him when I grow up. And he has continued to do big things with Urban Financial Services Coalition professionally. And I am so proud to be able to call him a friend and a colleague. You know, ladies and gentlemen, let us give him some thumbs up and virtual hand clap for Ernie Ernest L. Smith. The floor is yours. Are you on mute, Ernie?
All right. Can you all see my screen?
Yes.
All right. Well, you know, I asked D2 to kind of spare the introduction because that usually is just, you know, a couple of minutes of talking about all the things that I've done. But I do want to kind of share this because this is a picture of me back in, I think this was 1990, probably 1990, 1991, when I was actually the president of the Houston Urban Bankers Association. You know, I actually got involved back then. It was the Urban Bankers in 1986. And I have to say, it's been a crucial part of helping me get to where I was. Because at the time, you know, '85, I got into banking as a credit officer. When I decided I wanted to be a lending officer, it was kind of hard to get onto the training programs at the big banks. But I, you know, I just picked up the phone and called all the people, all of my Urban Bankers friends at the big banks. And they said, who do I talk to to get on your training program? And they, you know, gave me the names, gave me the invites, talked to three different people. I got on the training program over at Texas Commerce Bank, which went on to become JP Morgan Chase, you know. And then, you know, fast forward almost 20 years later, when, you know, because I was at JP Morgan Bank for 16 years, you know, when it became time to make another career transition, it was actually one of our advisory board members, Alan Brown, who was on the advisory board for Houston Urban Bankers, who gave me an intro to, back then it was Compass Bank. You know, and, you know, as they say, the rest is history. So, you know, I've been involved with the Urban Bankers for a long time. You know, you'll hear me use the term Urban Bankers, old habits die hard. But I have to say, for those of you who are just getting, you know, attached to this organization, definitely you'll get out of it what you put into it, and it can definitely help you in terms of your career here. So let me talk a little bit about kind of what we're here to talk about today. And, you know, this is what I look like currently, which I did look like the other pictures still. And I put in the intro Ernest Smith MBA CTP FPNA. Means I've had the chance to take a number of different tests recently. You know, when I was at Chase, I actually went back to school to get my MBA. And the first test I had to study for was the GMAT. And I hadn't been in school for like 15 years. So had not taken a test of this sort for that period of time. Really had to get back into the test-taking mode. And so that was a bit of a challenge for me. When I came over to Compass, I actually moved from commercial banking into treasury. And so I had to take the Certified Treasury Professionals exam. And that's the CTP designation. And I took that exam back in 2006. Got an email shortly after that saying that I was one of the high scorers on the exam for that particular period of time, wasn't the top score, one of the high scores. And as a result of that, I was invited to be a member of the Test Specification Committee, which helps put together the exam they use for Certified Treasury Professionals. So I had an opportunity to kind of see what goes into the development of a test like this. You know, from there, I went on to serving on the Body of Knowledge Committee, which puts together the reference books for the essentials of treasury management. That's what they use. That's what they test when they test for the CTP. And for the last 10 years, I've been an instructor in a couple of different CTP exam prep courses. So, you know, when D2 called and asked if I wanted to do a presentation, it's like, well, this is what I know best. You know, I've been teaching people how to prepare for exams, you know, for over 10 years. Let's talk about this. And so that's kind of how this session came about. Now, obviously, I'm most familiar with the CTP exam, but we're going to kind of broaden the scope a little bit. Because if you think about all the different types of exams that they have, you know, this is just a small list of exams that they have. You know, project management, government accounting, you know, FPNA is financial planning and analysis. There are a lot of different exams that you really need to take if you want to go after that certification. Now, let me talk a little bit about the certification, you know, and kind of getting back to the question that we asked earlier. Is it worth it to get a certification? And the answer to that is, it depends. But it is very seldom a bad thing to do, you know. When I say it depends, there are some industries where, you know, if you can demonstrate a good track record, you know, such as sales. In my job, I actually have a group of financial salespeople that provide treasury services throughout North Texas. You don't have to have a CTP to actually be one of my salespeople, okay? And in fact, about half of my people don't have that certification. However, all of my senior people do. So when it comes time for me to decide if somebody's ready to move on to that next step, I'm looking for that certification. And as I go look for people to fill slots, like recently, we had a couple of open positions. Although it wasn't a job requirement, I went into LinkedIn. I put in CTP in the search function, and I pulled up all the CTPs in LinkedIn so I could kind of look through those. Because that gave me an idea of their level of credibility. So in a lot of instances, although it's not a requirement, it can help you to establish that credibility. It can, you know, if you're already working in the industry and you tell your employer you're going after that certification, it can signal to them that you're ready for that next step, you know. And like I say, I can't think of any situation where it's necessarily the best. Well, the only time it may be, you know, not a wise choice is if you are trying to go after a position in one particular area but trying to seek a certificate in the other. And so if you come to me and you say, hey, I want to be a treasury professional, but you're going after your Series 63 exam, I would say, well, you know, doesn't sound like that's what you want to do. It sounds like you want to do something different, okay? So make sure that the certificate that you get is kind of, you know, matches your career goals. So, you know, if you want to be a project manager, get that PMP certificate. Don't waste your time getting the CTP certificate, okay? So that might be the only time when, you know, it would be a bad move. But in most cases, it makes a lot of sense to go after that certificate, okay? You know, now, I did a little bit of research because as I said, I was familiar with the CTP exam. The CTP exam is not an easy exam. We've got about 50% pass rate, you know, of those that take the CTP exam. So it's not really easy. But I did another round of research because I wanted to get an idea of kind of what the most difficult professional exams are. And this is a list of ones of the more difficult exams. CFP, Certified Financial Planner, that's a 62% pass rate. So, you know, difficult, but not the most difficult. The GRE, which is what's used a lot for grad school admissions, they don't really talk about pass rate. They talk about the percentage that has the scores over 650. Because that is an exam where the higher the score, the better the chance you have of getting into the school that you'd like, okay? So 650 is considered a good score. Only about 27% get above that. So that's a difficult exam. Financial Risk Manager, 40 to 50% pass rate. CPA, 40 to 50% pass rate. By far, it seems like the most difficult exam was the Certified Financial Analyst exam. And that's because there's actually three levels. There's like a 30 to 50% pass rate on each level. And only about 20% of the people that actually start make it all the way and pass Level 3. So that's probably the most difficult exam rate. But you can see, none of these exams are very easy. And so the biggest mistake a lot of people make is they say, I've been in the industry 10 years. I've been in the industry 20 years. I know everything there is to know about it. I can take the exam. I can ace the exam. No. These exams are serious exams, and they take some preparation. They take some strategy. But if you put in the work, if you come up with a strategy and you follow the strategy, you actually improve your chances of passing the exam. So what are some of the things that you can do once you decide that you want to take the exam? Well, these are the tips that we're going to talk about today. And the number one thing is believing that you can pass, you know. We say, hope is not a strategy. And that's pretty much what we're talking about here. You have to believe you can pass. We're going to talk about how you need to learn everything you can about the test, know your strengths and weaknesses, develop a study plan, develop a testing strategy, and then you invest your time and your resources in the exam. And at the end of the day, you still have to believe you can pass. So these are the things that we're going to talk about today. Now, when we say believe you can pass, at the very beginning, it's really challenging. And it's challenging in a couple of ways. First of all, you know, you got to psych yourself up. Do I want to go after this? Oh, I can't possibly do this. Oh, it's too big. I can't. You've got to kind of get into the mindset that this is something that you can do, okay? And you have to eliminate that negative thinking because that will prevent you from taking the first step and the second step. You've got to take that first step. You've got to make up your mind that you're going to take the exam. Oftentimes, at this stage, it helps to enlist a couple of people. You know, it's one thing if I say, all right, I'm going to take the CTP exam. But if you, you know, tell your coworker, you tell your boss, one of the things that I want to do is I want to take the CTP exam. You state that as a goal, and now you've got to put it out there, and it makes it more difficult for you to wind that back. So, you know, you set this as a goal, you eliminate the negative thinking, you take those first steps, okay? Then the next thing, the next challenge oftentimes is, all right, you decide you want to do that. You pull up information about what's on the test, and it's this huge volume of information. You know, for example, if you look at the CTP book, the book is about the size of a phone book. You know, some of you youngsters know what a phone book is. But, you know, back then, when we had phone books, they were like three inches thick, okay? A lot of information. And there are a lot of people that look at the volume of information that they have to learn, and they say, I can't possibly do that, okay? And this is where you also have to believe that you can. You leverage the power of planning. If I am handed a three-inch book of information and I have to take the test, you know, in a week, that's probably not going to happen. But if I've got to take the test six months from now or nine months from now, I can create a study plan that will allow me to actually absorb that entire volume of information by the time I have to take that exam in six months or nine months. So that's what we mean when we say understand the value of time. You know, if you spend two hours, three hours a day, every day for six months, working on something, you're going to get really good over that period of time. So, you know, I can understand if you're intimidated if you got to take the test in two weeks. But if you got to take the test in six months or nine months or one year's time, you can create a study plan that allows you to leverage the value of time and be totally prepared by the time it comes to take that exam, okay? So this is what I mean when I say believe you can pass. State the goal and, you know, start to build your plan, okay? First step in building your plan, learn everything you can learn about the test. Every certifying body puts information on their website about the test. And this is a step that a lot of people pass up. But this is probably the best information. This is number one. I put three stars by this. Spend your time, do your homework, find out about the test. You go to the website. It'll tell you the qualifications for testing. This is important because I have run into cases where people have signed up for my classes, even gone through the class and then found out that they didn't qualify to take the test, okay? So make sure you know about the qualifications upfront so you know that you qualify. And then find out what is the procedure for applying for the test, okay? Pass that, then look at all the resources that are on the website. And, you know, actually, I pulled up a couple of websites. I'm going to see if I can pull them up here. For example, this is, if you can see my screen here, this is what we have for our CTP exam. It's a CTP exam prep guide. Everybody who's interested in taking the exam can download one of these. It goes into great detail. You've got test-taking tips. It talks about how the test is actually developed, how many questions come from each chapter, how many total questions. It tells you, you know, you have 170 multiple-choice questions. It gives you examples of what the questions look like. So it's a lot of great information about the exam that can be very useful for you as you start to put together a study plan. You know, now you know what you're up against. If you go to the website, it also gives you information about, okay, what is the reference book that will be used? You know, if there are study aids, if you go to the AFP website, for example, you can download flashcards that you can utilize. You can, you know, look for practice tests. You can find study groups. But these are all the resources that you have available to you as you begin to study. And, you know, I can't tell you how many times I've heard somebody say, man, I wish I'd have known that was there when I was taking the test. Well, you didn't do your work upfront. Do your work upfront. Find out what the resources are, and you can utilize them as part of your plan. Now, you also find out what the procedures are for taking the test. And when I say the procedures are, as an example, for the CTP test, you go into the testing facility. You're not allowed to take anything in. You know, the only thing that you're allowed to use is a four-function calculator and a whiteboard. And your test is done on a computer with a timer up at the front, up at the top, okay? Why is that important? Well, when you practice, you'll hear me say, you want to practice how you're going to test. So, you know, as an example, when I took the test, I have a degree in finance, so I could do present value, future value calculations all day long in my sleep on an Excel spreadsheet. I had to learn how to do that on a four-function calculator, okay? It's a completely different skill set. And had I not learned how to do that on a four-function calculator, I would have had serious problems with those particular problems on the test. So make sure you understand how you're going to be taking the test, and then you practice how you're going to test, okay? As I mentioned, you can also pull up information about how the test is developed, you know, what material is covered on the test. You know, as an example, in our test, as you look at the book, we've got the material. We've got footnotes. We've got the appendices. But the rule is, anything in the appendices is just for reference information. It's not going to be on the test. So if you spend all your time, you know, memorizing what's in the appendices, you're wasting your time, okay? So understand what's going to be on the test and what's not going to be on the test. How many parts are on the test? What is the time allocated for each test? You know, number of questions, type of questions, how they're scored. Is there a penalty for wrong answers? That's a very important question. And we'll talk about that in the slides that follow. But, you know, again, learn everything you can about the test itself, and that will help you prepare for the test and will help you develop your testing strategy. and that will help you prepare for the test and will help you develop your testing strategy as well. And we'll talk about that as well, okay? This is an example of some of the websites that you can go to. CFA has a website, you can click on that, you know, and I'm not going to click on that because last time I tried it, it took me five minutes to load my presentation again. But you can go to these websites, I actually went to each of these websites and they've got a lot of information about these tests on the website. So whatever the certifying body is, go to that website, do your homework, learn everything you can about the test here. Okay. Now, one of the other things I strongly recommend is knowing what your strengths and weaknesses are. Okay, in some cases, like in the case of our exam, the CTP exam, we actually have a pre-test. And we urge everybody to take a pre-test and, you know, about half the people too, but those that don't are missing an opportunity. Because the pre-test allows you to see, alright, what questions did I do well? Or where did I have challenges? And this becomes important because, you know, even if we're leveraging the value of time, time is not unlimited. And so if we have a limited amount of time, would we be better off studying the material that we know? Or would we be better off studying the material that we don't know? Okay, well, the pre-test will tell you what you know, what you don't know. If you can't get a hold of a pre-test, see if you can find any old tests out there. One of the things that I did when I was studying to, to, for the, for the GMAT, I think I took, I don't, I can't remember if I took the GMAT or GRE to get into grad school. But one of the things that I did was, I actually went to used bookstores and they actually have previous versions of study guides for the test. And it was very useful for me because I bought, you know, three or four or five different versions and took the old test just to get an idea of what the test would be. For the first one was kind of a pre-test, I got an idea kind of what I was, you know, doing right, what I was doing wrong. And it gave me some, some, you know, some practice. So if you can't get a pre-test, see if you can go to, you know, a bookstore and find some sample tests and old tests. But again, understand what material you're most comfortable with, what you're least comfortable with. And it'll also give you some insight into your learning style. Okay, as you understand your learning style, that's going to be key information for you as you develop your study plan. You know, some of us are more auditory, we can listen and pick up. Some of us have to read it, you know, some of us have to work with it. Okay, well, that's what you're going to build into your study plan because what works for me might not work as well for D2 or for Otis or for Tenia or, you know, because we all have different learning styles. And, and so you want to make sure you maximize that advantage here. Okay, so now it's time to develop your study plan. Okay, and as you start, you know, this is where we talked about leveraging the value of time. If you know you've got nine months before you have to take the test, then you can calculate how much time you have per week or per day, so you can calculate total hours. Okay, and then as you do total study hours, then you can start to allocate hours to your areas of weaknesses and your areas of strength. So if I know I've got twenty different chapters and, and I know I've got, you know, nine months to do twenty chapters, that means I've got to do a little more than two chapters every month. Okay, so I can do a study plan. Well, the first chapter, it, it's, it's, you know, pretty much introduction to treasury management. I don't need more than, you know, a couple hours for that. But the chapter on derivatives and risk management in foreign currency, I'm probably going to need a good week for that. So you can start to allocate the study hours based on where you see your areas of strength and areas of weakness. Okay, and again, remember the phrase, the way to eat an elephant is one bite at a time. Okay, so you're going to break up that study time then into daily portions. And I recommend daily, no, you know, if you can't do daily, at least do every other day and put that time on your calendar. And, you know, use it, actually defend that. That means, you know, if you're married, you tell your wife or your husband or your significant other that I'm going to be in my office between six and seven every day, please don't bother me. You know, or, you know, tell your coworkers, at lunchtime, I'm going to be here. You know, maybe even go to your boss and say, hey, I'm going to study every, every day at lunch for an hour, is there, is there a room that I can use? But defend that study time and use it every day. Because if, you know, you eat elephants one bite at a time, but if you're not taking those bites, you're going to turn up and turn around and half that elephant's still going to be there. Okay, so, you know, plan your work, put it on the calendar, work your plan. Okay, again, I say, practice the same way that you're going to test. So if you, if you pull up sample tests, do those sample tests in a timed format. Okay, if you, you know, if you know that you've got three hours for the exam, then you want to kind of calculate the amount of time you're going to have per question on the final exam. Look at how many questions you have on the practice exam and calculate it, you know, how much time you should be completing that practice exam. Okay, because as you start the exams, you're going to start off slow. The idea for you is to kind of pick up that pace. Okay, so you want to do all of your practice design, exams timed and using the same resources. In my case, whiteboard for function calculator. Okay, and that way you, you get the reps in and you get used to the testing environment that you're going to have here. Okay. Alright, now, as you talk about actually taking the test, you do have to have a strategy for taking the test as well. Because the strategy you have for taking the test is going to be very important and can actually make the difference between, you know, you coming close or passing the test. As an example, as we look, and this is what I talked to my students when it comes to doing the CTP exam. We know on the CTP exam, you've got three and a half hours for a hundred and seventy questions. Okay, so we tell our students, you take the number of minutes, two hundred and ten minutes divided by a hundred and seventy, and that's how much time you're going to have per question, but I want you to do eighty percent of that. Okay, so that you make sure that you're going faster. That means that roughly, you're going to have to do at least one minute per question on that exam. Okay, now, that means now, as you go into that exam, you have to have a time management strategy. Okay, so if you're halfway through the, the exam time, let, let's say you're an hour in, that means you have to have at least sixty questions answered or you're not going fast enough to complete the exam. Okay, so you have to have a time management strategy based on the speed that you need to be answering questions. Now, you do that on the front end because now, as you go back and practice, you can see on your practice exam, am I going fast enough to complete the exam? And one of your strategies is going to be, let's get that speed up. Okay, should you guess on the exam? Well, it depends. This is why we ask you to find out about the exam. If there's a penalty for wrong answers, maybe not a good idea. In the case of our exam or CTP exam, there is no penalty for wrong answers. So one of the things I tell my student is that you should leave no question unanswered. Okay, the CTP exam, it's multiple choice, you've got four choices for every question. So even if you do total wild guess in circle A on each and every one of them, you got a twenty-five percent chance of getting that right. Okay, so if you do that for questions, chances are you're going to get one of them right, you'll get extra points. So if there is not a penalty for wrong answers, you should leave no question unanswered. Okay, now, there's also a testing strategy based on how the test is, is scored. In the case of our exam, all of the questions have the same number of points. So what I tell my students is to do all of the hard questions last. Okay, because all the points are equal, you do all the easy ones first, you do the ones that are a little harder second, and then you do the harder questions last. Because if it takes you ten minutes to answer a hard question, those are potentially ten easy questions that you could have answered in the same time. So if you get to the end and you have to guess, you have to guess on fewer number of questions and that in and of itself can get you higher points. Okay, if there is a, a kind of what I call differential scoring where some of the questions are worth more than others, you need to find that out. And then you develop your testing strategy so that you do better on the questions with the higher points and, you know, give them more attention. You know, so if you do have a situation where you don't necessarily have a chance to get to all the, the questions, you make sure you get to all the questions with a higher points first. Okay, so you have to have a strategy as to how you take the exam. This is why we spend our time on the front end, understanding the testing and the scoring methodology. Okay, so that, that way you know how fast you can answer the questions, you know how to keep track of time, you know whether or not you should guess, and you know which questions you should do first and which ones you should do last. And then finally, should you go through the test twice? You know, when I was going to school, they would always say, whenever you test, you go back, you check your work at the end of the test, you go through it twice. Frankly, when I took the CTP exam, wherever I went through the test twice, I would kind of second guess myself and found myself taking right answers and changing them to wrong answers. So it wasn't a good strategy for me. When I took the FPNA exam, it was a little bit different. I actually picked up points when I went through the test twice. So the idea is for you to figure out what works for you. The only way you do that is on the practice exams. You know, the first couple of practice exams, go through the practice exams twice, make a note of any answers that you change. And then when you go back and you score, you see if you, you know, the answers that you changed, if they increased your score or they decreased your score. Okay, if you go through that a couple of times, you find you're changing good answers to bad answers, then just go through it once. Yeah, don't go through it twice. So again, this is going to be kind of up to you, this is individual. Okay. Alright, and again, invest the time to work your, your plan. The longer the timeframe, the more preparation you can have. You can put the study time on your calendar, you can break it up into more chunks. You know, I recommend using found time whenever possible. You know, when I was taking the CTP exam, I always had my book with me. So if I found myself waiting in line at the DMV, not a problem, I would just start reading my book. Okay, nowadays, you've got books, you've got electronic learning. You know, I actually, back then, it should tell you how long ago it was I took the exam, I actually made up some CDs where I read the material onto the CDs so I could listen to them while I was, you know, driving back and forth in the car. Okay, this is where your learning style comes into play. If you're somebody who, you know, likes to read, only gets information from reading, then you make sure you have that book or that tablet with you anywhere you go. You know, if you like to listen, you know, again, use CDs, use audio, use whatever so that you can listen wherever you are. You know, back when we used to drive back and forth to work, that was a great strategy. I don't know if it works so much now, but there will be a time when we do more driving. Okay, you know, if you're somebody who has to work with the material, then find time to do calculations and do sample problems, do as many practice tests as you can. But again, adapt your study plan to your work style. If you have an exam that involves a lot of calculations and formulas, I always tell people, don't necessarily try to memorize formulas. Try to understand what the formula represents. You know, on the CTP exam, a lot of the formulas are based on the present value and future value of money. So if I understand how they're applying present value and future value, I don't have to memorize the formula. It comes to me and I can actually improvise if I have to. Okay, so spend the time to understand what the calculations represent as opposed to trying to memorize them, trying to memorize all the calculations really hard. Okay, and then budget your test-taking time. Again, break it into pieces, manageable pieces, and, you know, that will help you get the job done. Okay. You know, investing in resources. You know, as that, as I mentioned on the website, and actually Otis and I were talking about this earlier. In most cases, you can go to the website and it will tell you, you know, if there's study groups, if there's online discussion boards. You know, in the case of the AFP, they will actually give you a list of third-party, you know, learning products like test preparation classes, both online and in person. If there's any test preparation guides, practice tests. Yes, some of these might cost you some money. But again, you know, I, I think you, you know, if you really want to advance your career, it's something you should probably consider. You know, as I was preparing for the exam, I had a problem getting enough test questions. And so I actually found the resource, it was called tmexam.com. And I paid for that out of pocket and it gave me more practice tests, more calculations, more stuff that I could work on. And so definitely worth the time and effort. If you can, you know, get your manager to support this, oftentimes, they will either pay for a test prep class directly or in a lot of cases, you can pay for it out of pocket and get reimbursed via tuition reimbursement. And so that might be an option to you, for you as well. And it's, it's interesting, I have to share a story because my daughter actually is in social media and she recently, you know, got outplaced from her position due to the quarantine. So she found another job and she learned that I was doing this session and she says, well, you know, that's what we do at our, at our job. And I said, well, tell me again what you do, because she just started working with the company. And then, and the company is called UWorld. And they actually provide test preparation classes for a large number of exams. I think GMAT, you know, the GRE, if I remember correctly, CPA, CFA. But they, they actually provide test prep products. And so, you know, there, there are a number of resources out there. And in fact, they're actually rolling out a new product. So if you go to the, the website, it's www.uworld.com. One of the, at least one of the products, they're actually providing for very, very cheap pricing. You know, so there's a promo code you can put in there, you can sign up for test prep classes. So, you know, that's an example of some of the resources that you can utilize. Because I can tell you, it is possible for people to study on their own and pass a test. It is very difficult, you know. So at the minimum, you know, the hardest thing to do is just get the book, read it and get prepared for the test. If you can, at least get some online resources, you know, a study guide. As I said, go to bookstores, see if they have study guide in, you know, for the more popular tests like the, you know, GMAT, the CFA. You know, you can find those at the bookstore. Definitely spend a little bit of money and, and, you know, it will help you as you prepare for the test here. Okay, and then finally, again, you've got to believe you can pass. Once you've done everything that you've done, you, you, you've set up your plan, you've, you've got prepared, you've done your studying, you've done your resources. Oftentimes, people get to this point and now they, you know, it's so close, they, they start to get nervous and they don't think they can take the test or they, you know, they don't think they can do that. But if you've taken the time to put in the work, then you really shouldn't be second guessing yourself at this step. You know, if you've done the practice test, you can say, hey, I've done the practice test, I'm getting ninety percent on the practice test. You know, I, my, my, right now, I'm answering the questions forty-five seconds per each question. You know, I've, right now, I've got a level of proficiency at all the different, you know, body of knowledge. So if you've done the time to prepare, you know, just look back and say, hey, I've done the work, I've worked my plan, I can pass. You know, and don't let yourself get this close to the finish line without taking without taking that step over. So, you know, I know I've given you a lot of information. I guess let's, let's, that's what I have. Let's go ahead and I guess take some questions. You can put them in chat or just use your microphone here.
Hey Ernie, this is D2. The, the first question I have that was sent to me is, you talked several times about the, the power of belief. And that, you know, believing, you know, what, what are some additional things that people can do to, you know, using another word, it says, to build their confidence? You know, you know, because confidence is, is, you know, has an impact on how well people perform.
Yeah. Well, I will tell you, confidence comes from preparation, okay? If you, if you, I guess worst case scenario, let's say you've developed a six month plan and you say, okay, every day at 12 o'clock, I'm going to study. And you find out that, okay, you didn't defend the study time. So, so you didn't really put in the work and you're not as prepared. Because we understand sometimes things happen, you know? Then that might be the time for you to decide, well, do I need to go in and take the test half prepared? Or do I need to maybe wait to the next testing window and just kind of regroup and work the plan again? So the only time that you, you really shouldn't have that confidence is if you didn't work your plan. But if you take the time to work your plan, one of the advantages is that you can know that you've put in the work, okay? You're not going into something unprepared. You've done the practice test on a time basis. You've done the simulations. I mean, it's, it's like if you were going to learn to fly a plane, okay? Would you be comfortable in just going in and sitting in the pilot's seat and figuring out, okay, well, let's see what can happen? Or if you had had the opportunity to be in the simulator for, you know, 100 hours, yeah, you might still be a little bit nervous, but you've done the work, you know? And now this is, you know, you'll, you'll feel prepared here. So it's kind of the same thing. If you've done the work, the work helps you to develop that confidence. It helps you to develop that belief that you can do it, you know? And that is kind of the single biggest thing that, that will help you in getting comfortable and taking the test. Now, now, let me say also, a lot of people say, well, you know, I take the test, I don't pass the test, the world's going to come to the end. No, the world will not come to the end, to an end. I actually have worked with people that have taken, you know, the test two or three times before they've even come to one of my classes. And they pass on the third time. So understand that this is not a, this is not like, you know, American Idol where you, you know, you, you try out and you don't pass, you go home with a tail between your legs. This is a goal that you set, you know? It's a long-term goal. And, you know, if, if for whatever reason doesn't happen the first time, you take some notes, you go back, you revise your study plan, you use it as a learning experience. You say, okay, yeah, I went in, thought I knew the math. I had problems on this, this and this, okay? And then work your plan all over again for the next study window, so.
Absolutely. I got another question in here, Ernie, is, it talks about, this is from your experience as an instructor. What, why do, have you seen any differences between minority candidates taking the test and non-minority taking the test? And, and the other question is that, you know, the standardized testing like SAT has been seen to be biased. Is, has the same thing been said about professional certifications?
Not so much, you know? And again, it depends on the test itself. You know, I've got the most experience on the CTP. And the way our test is structured, it, it's pretty much about concepts, numbers, things like that. Where we're seeing challenges on things like the SAT, like the graduate test and such, that's where you do have maybe some more cultural bias. Because, you know, back when I was taking the graduate test, there was a written component, there was an English component. You know, there were some questions about history and we don't all learn the same history, you know? But we all learn the same accounting procedures. We, you know, the time value of money is the same whether you're black, whether you're white. So there's not as much of that on the professional test because they're testing your ability to understand the concepts that are required to be successful in a particular, you know, line of business. So, yeah, on the admission test, probably more cultural bias. On the professional test, not as much, you know? Because again, it's mostly numbers, it's concepts. You know, regarding whether or not I, I see a difference, you know, between, you know, an African American taking a test, not. Yeah, I can honestly say, not really, you know? I have some people that are, that are coming in really trying to, to, I, I guess the only difference I've seen are the ones where English is a second language. And, and I do see, I had, I had one student went through, took the test four times, English was the second language. Never did pass the test because she just didn't have that level of English proficiency. Other than that, I don't, I don't really, haven't really seen a challenge on the professional test, so.
Okay, thank you. Another person you have a question, Otis, you have a question?
Yes, sir. Ernie, first of all, outstanding presentation. My, my, my hand hurts from taking notes. But, but I'm not surprised. You've always been an outstanding professional. I've known you for at least 40 years. So congratulations and I'm sure you're teaching your, your students quite a bit. Two things, one, the, the comment you made about, you know, is it important to get certified? And I applaud you for that because you need to know your environment and know what's happening within your environment. If you're doing your job every day and no one's asking you, you know, are you registered or are you certified? Those should be buzzwords to your ears to let you know those types of things are important in the world you're in. So if you, you try to go for a job in which you are imminently qualified for, imminently qualified, you've been doing it, you can, you can do the moonwalk backwards and do it. You go for it, you have no certifications. You know, D2 goes for it, he has three certifications. Even though you may be the favorite child in the company, they will find a reason to give the job to D2 because he's adapted to the culture of certifications within his world. So even though you may feel like it may not be anything that's going to help you in the short run, it certainly could help you in the long run, particularly if you're in, you're in a, a particular area and you want to move out of that area. You know, you've been, you know, peeling tomatoes for 15 years. Now you want to start peeling cucumbers, you know? Well, you may not get a chance to peel cucumbers because you don't have the right certification, so keep that in mind. One thing, and then the second part I have is, Ernie, Ernie, you and I, we were talking about this briefly in the breakout. There are a number of courses out there you can take. Kaplan, Strategic Training Corporation, STC, a, a bunch of things. And, and of course, I, I think it dictates what you're training for, you know, to, to determine what course you should take. But if a person was confused with all these Christmas certification courses out there, what would be the best way for them to kind of dissect that information to get a course that may be comfortable for them?
Yep, well, you know, two things. I mentioned going to the website and seeing what's recommended on the website. But also, you know, use your network. Those of you who, you know, who know people that have the certification, ask them how they got, you know, prepared for the certification. And this is good, this is great to do anyway. Ask them, you know, what they thought about the test. You know, just get their experience. And, you know, when you ask 10 people, gee, how did you get certified? How did you get certified? And if there's one or two names that come up all the time, you'll get the, the feel that, you know, yeah, these, these are the ones that work. You know, because if you're asking people that have the licenses, it obviously worked, you know? Let me, let me say one other thing also because you, you touched on something that, you know, is kind of separate but related. But when I talk about the, using the value of time, you know, I mentioned I went back and got my MBA when I was working at Chase and I'd, I'd been working at Chase. I was actually in their diversity and leadership development area. Went into that position, I'd gone from a commercial lending group. And, you know, from the first day I got into that position, I was asking myself, well, what is the next step? Because it was a little daunting for me. It was the first job I'd gone into that didn't necessarily have a next step, past that. So started thinking about what the next step would be from here. Didn't know what it would be, but as I was looking around and surveying the environment, I understood that I would have more options with an MBA than without one, okay? And that gave me the opportunity. And mind you, I asked this as I got into the position. So I had the luxury of two and a half years to be able to go back and get a graduate degree. You know, if I had not done that planning upfront, you know, three years passed by, there's your job, I see, I need an MBA. It's too late for me to go back and get an MBA now, you know? So when I say utilize the power of planning, you know, have that discussion with yourself. What is the next step? You know, how can I get there? Is it certification? Is it going back to school? And if you ask those questions early, you've got enough time, you know? You've got nine months, you've got two years to, to go back and take the test, get that certification or get that degree. So that's another thing that I mean when I say utilize the, the, you know, utilize the power of time here.
Thank you.
Absolutely, and you hit it on the head. And it really ties back to, Ernie, to what Collie Gibson said on his call with us. I mean, you know, he's Executive Vice President at Fifth Third Bank. Is that he had a 10-year plan. And, and with his plan, everything didn't go as he expected. But it guided him through the different challenges. It helped him make decisions to move from one market to another. It helped him make some decisions about whether he was going to get a certification or go to graduate school. You know, having a, a framework on your, what you want to do for your career really helps. And that's one of the things that, you know, I think that a lot of people struggle with is, you know, there's a difference between chasing dollars and chasing titles versus, you know, finding a path that is aligned with your values, aligned with things that get you on fire. So Ernie, how have you been able to, you know, balance, you know, your home life? You know, the pressures, right? And at the same time managing your career growth?
You know, i- it's funny, you, you, you mentioned that because I'm, I'm actually going to answer a slightly different question, but it's based on what you just said. You know, I mentioned I had gone when I was at Chase from a commercial banking position into, you know, diversity, training and leadership development. I mean, completely different of, of choice. I mean, it, it was not, you know, it was not the normal career path. And one of the ways that that happened was me actually not paying attention to titles but paying attention to the types of things that I liked doing, you know? I, at that time was, you know, a, a commercial banker, but I was in the private bank. And their business model had evolved from, you know, the original business model that they had told me when I went into the private bank was I would be dealing with the same company press and as corporate executives, just talking about their personal business versus their, you know, their company business. I said, cool, I could do that. I have a, a good network of, you know, financial executives and, and corporate presidents and such. But the business model evolved to River Oaks Old Money. And I wasn't a member of River Oaks in, you know, not the circles that I travel in, you know? So I didn't think I would be successful long-term under that business model. So I started looking for something different. And I was actually working with somebody in HR. And they asked me, you know, what are some of the things that you like doing? You know, and at the time, I was the, the Vice President for Leadership Development in, for UFSC. If you remember, I was going from city to city doing strategic planning, you know, seminars and, and, and basically teaching people, you know, how to run their chapters, you know? And so I got a call from, from a person and they said, well, here's this job for diversity consultant, you really should take a look at it. And I was like, you know, I'd been in diversity committee meetings. It was like watching paint jobs. I was like, why would I ever take this job? And they said, well, you know, it's a good match for what you, you know, say you'd like to do. Because, you know, a large portion of it was mentoring programs. And, and doing mentoring programs, both informal and formal, leadership development training, that was what the job was. And so the more she talked, the more I said, well, let me think about it. And they said, well, you got to come in and you got audition for this. You got to do a presentation, you know, which would have scared some people. But, you know, I was going from city to city doing present, presentation. Wasn't a big thing for me, you know? I'd already, I'd already learned these skills in, within the organization. So I went in, I did the presentation, you know, structured it, you know, like I'd done, you know, so many times before. This is what I mean when I say, practice the way you're going to test. You know, I'd already practiced this. Got the job, you know, was going to do it for two years, ended up doing it for six years. You know, and, and so that's an example of both how the organization kind of helped me build the skills and, you know, doing exactly what you said, not necessarily chasing the title, but doing what it was I liked to do. Because she looked at my resume, she looked at what I was doing in my spare time for free. And she said, well, you know, come on, we'll pay you to do it, you know? And that's kind of how I got into that position, so, yeah.
Absolutely, and, and that's one of the powerful value propositions for Urban Financial Services Coalition, is the place to practice. You know, it's a place to, you know, hone your skills, you know, try some things that you may think that you may have an interest in. And then when you have to do it for, you know, for your job, you know, it's like, okay, I've, I've done this, you know? And then the additional exposure is, is amazing. So with that, I mean, you know, Ernie, we could talk all night. We could talk all night. So we're going to have to transition. We do have the Urban Financial Services Coalition National President on the line, Ms. Ola Trulove. Do you have any remarks or things you'd like to share before we transition the call?
Well, good evening.
Oh, you're, you're on mute, Ola. Ola, you're on mute.
I am, I am, thank you very much. Yes, thank you so much, Ernie, for your presentation. I concur with everything that you said. You've got to be prepared to go in and do these things and to be successful. I did have a question, but I don't really think that it's relevant that I can share with the entire group because I think most of the people on this call are young professionals that are seeking to advance in their careers as a senior season employees that are on the downside of life. I guess that question would be, do you recommend moving forward with these designations or these certifications? That would be a question that I would pose to you, Ernie.
Well, it depends on your reason why, you know? I have a fair number of people that come into my exam review course just because they want to learn about, they, they have no intention of taking exam, but they want to get a better grasp on the topics, you know? Because they're, you know, maybe they're in a new role or expanded role or they've always wanted to know about this. So there is that value to just learning the material, you know? So I would say probably about 40% of the people that come through my Uh, so I would say probably about 40% of the people that come through my class never take the exam. But they do, you know, they do want to learn the material. So it depends. Uh, now, if you do want to take that next step, oftentimes when you want to go into management, um, you know, or something like that, um, yeah, it can be helpful in opening the doors. Um, you know, if, as you say, you know, you're like, okay, I'm in the position I'm going to be in until I retire. Um, yeah, yeah, you have to have probably another reason to want to take the exam. It's, it's more for the value of, of learning. So yeah, it can be valuable just from a learning experience as well here.
Yeah, and then taking those skill sets that you provide uh in your training class, those can be transferable skills into maybe another career that you want to have as far as consulting is concerned, learning how to manage your time and all of those things. So I uh certainly uh did receive value in the things that you said.
Well, and, and let me, let me add something real quick. Uh, you know, if you do get to, you know, like your end, you're, you're close to the end of your career, like I'm at the age where I'm not taking social security, but I'm doing the calculations, you know? You know, you got to think, well, okay, when I do decide to retire, what am I going to do? And, and so you might actually think about the certification in an industry that you want to go into. You know, uh, like if I decide, hey, you know, when, when I retire, maybe I want to sell insurance as a sideline. Well, instead of the CTP, maybe I'm thinking about the Series 63, you know, or something like that. Cause I, I'll tell you what, um, when you get to be my age, people come in, they see you had a certification, they're going to assume you've been doing this for 30 years. You know, even if you've just, you got your certificate, you know? Uh, because they, you know, so that's the, you know, you might as well use the one advantage you have when you, when you get to the little gray in the beard and all that. They're going to assume you, you've done this forever if you've got that certificate. So, you know, that's something else you might think about.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. And again, I guess one of the things that I want all us to remember is we have 33 days, 6 hours, 22 minutes, 20 seconds, and we are counting. Counting to vote. That's what we must do for this election. I cannot stress that, emphasize that enough. If you haven't registered, please get registered and please be prepared to vote. Urban Financial Services Coalition uh nationally and across all of our chapters, we believe in the fact that Black Lives Matter. It's highly important that we all understand that we are in an environment with the pandemic. All different storms on the West Coast, the East Coast, South, and with the civil unrest that's going on across our communities, we can make a change. And I think that it's time for us to be aware of that and I cannot say that enough. So every time I try to have an audience of us or anybody that I'm speaking to, I'd like to encourage us to make sure that we vote. So thank you so much. I know D2 probably already has said or will ask that uh you explore, review our website that is new and we are constantly adding value to that website. Please do that. If you have any questions for me, please reach out to me. And thank you gentlemen so much and all of you all that are on the call this evening. May you be blessed and may whatever weather conditions you're in, from whatever part of the country you're in, that you are protected and you're being taken care of. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Absolutely, Madam President. Um, Ernie, thank you so much for a wonderful presentation. We do have the key takeaways um that all of you can, uh, will have access to when we send you a copy of the PowerPoint. If you do have some additional questions um that you would like to um talk to Ernie about, you know, please send him an email. His email address is, is here. Ernie, thank you so much for providing that. Um, so one thing about the Urban Financial Services Coalition, your professional family, is that we're here to support and to help you succeed. Cause when you succeed, we succeed as a broader community. Um, to, today is the last day for the census. Um, if you don't know anybody that still hasn't done it, they can go online. They got until 12 o'clock um tonight to uh get their information in. And this is how uh federal resources are actually allocated throughout the country. So we want to make sure that all of our, um, everyone is counted and um those resources are appropriately allocated. Madam President has already talked about voting. You know, Urban Financial Services Coalition is a nonpartisan organization. We can't tell you who to vote for, but we want to encourage you to be informed voter. You know, know what your particular uh needs are and um vote according to your needs. And sometimes you have to vote according to the needs of the community, you know, for the sacrifice of the rest of our particular community. Uh, and so with that, we also are looking for individuals to be a part of our professional family. We would love to be your professional family. You know, Ola would love to be your president. We would love for you to um be a part of making a difference. So you can join us um at ufscnet.org and, and become a member. Um, so we would love to have you as a part of, a member of our organization. And so we can grow the number across the country. And I always like to end with uh be a river, not a reservoir. What does a reservoir do? It keeps all the information to itself. And what does a river do? A river shares all of its nutrients with others. And when it shares it to, shares it with other folks, it enables it um for other pe- things to turn green and for other things to grow.